Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the January 3rd, 2019 Bowling Green Town Council meeting. We do have a forum. I'd like to welcome the two new council members and Jean on her reelection. We look forward to the next four year, next two years for us, because we overlap, but we look forward to your four-year terms. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you look at your agenda tonight, things look a little bit different than, we've got it on the right side, look a little bit different than a normal council meeting. We have some organizational matters that we need to take care of before we get down to the public here, the public comment section of the agenda. So first order of business is the election of a vice mayor. As you know, Glenn has served as the vice mayor for the first two years of my term, along with previously as David's vice mayor. The way we elect those, we take nominations from council and if there's more than one nominee, we vote on either way, whether we have one or more nominations. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for any nominations for vice mayor.
Vice Mayor, I nominate Glenn McDermott.
Hi. Jean?
What point of order, I'm sorry, just if you could indicate by a gesture, raising your hand, in order to be, to speak, you need to be technically recognized by the chair.
So Jean?
I nominate Glenn McDermott.
Okay, Glenn McDermott as a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Mark Gaines.
Okay, nomination for Mark Gaines.
Glenn.
Okay, what are his nominations? Are there any other nominations for, okay, the procedure now will be-
Closed nominations are closed.
We'll close the nominations and we will have a yes/no vote on each candidate and we will start with Glenn as the first. All in favor, raise your right hand.
If you can do a roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. We'll start over here, roll call.
Aye.
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 I'm sorry.
No.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll do a vote for Mark.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, Mr. McDermott is now the vice mayor until, for the two-year period. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the appointment of council members for the EDA. We, I have some recommendations, how the decision is on for council. We have two spots available. We have Glenn's term that expired this year and that term will be through 11/3/2022. And then we have the expired, the vacancy that Tyler created when he came off of council. That term runs from 11/2/2020. My recommendations would be to reappoint Glenn McDermott and appoint Jean Davis to the EDA, but that's, that's just my input on that. We'll take council's thoughts on that.
Mr. Mayor, I think your slate is fine. I would accept your slate.
Okay.
I'd like to see some qualifications for the candidates first, because being a part of EDA is not a glorified job. It is something that needs to be earned as far as you've been invested before, if you're operated with money. I mean, there's a lot to it during your EDA instead of just saying, "I want to be on EDA just for that."
So I think I need to see qualifications, especially on Jean. Glenn, he's been on, okay, I've got no problem. Okay, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the appointments as stated?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the motion is that we appoint yourself and Jean to the EDA. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Okay, we'll do a roll call, Glenn.
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The motion-
Carries.
The motion carries. I'll try this. This isn't working either. So I'll just speak up.
It stopped working.
Yeah, I've got bad cable somewhere if we found out. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll just, I'll speak up so the crowd can hear me. I don't think that'll be an issue. Next on the agenda is committee appointments. I presented each one of the council members last month and sent via the town manager to the new council members how I would like to see us do the committees for this year. We changed it up a little bit. We combined some committees to reduce meetings so that we could keep the meetings to two months, two meetings a month for each council member. As we all know, Valerie is their appointment for the planning commission. The other two committees that we, I would like to establish are the budgets, policy, personnel, and ordinance committee, and then a utility, streets, sidewalks, buildings, and grounds committee. And as I say, that we reduced these to two committees and we added two appointments to each committee, it doesn't say that you can't attend a committee meeting or be active on that committee if you so choose. They're publicly, public meetings that are properly posted, so if more than majority want to attend, they can attend. So at this time, the budget, policy, personnel, and ordinance committee appoint Mark Gaines as the chair. Mark has served on the budgets committee in the past. And appoint Deborah Howard to serve on that committee with, with Mark. And we'll get with you, Debra, to explain what's expected and how they go about what's each part of that. The utilities, streets, sidewalks, buildings, and grounds committee will be chaired by Otis Wright and Tammy Ginn. We would like to schedule these meetings on a reoccurring basis and they will be canceled if not needed. We will do the budget, policy, personnel, and ordinance committee on the third Tuesday of the month, and the utility, streets, sidewalks, buildings, and grounds on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And we'll, we'll let the chairs work out with the committee members, get with the town manager the next day or so on setting a good time. Like I said, we'll set these committee meetings and if for some reason they're not needed that month, we can cancel them. But I do know there's a lot of work to be done on both of these committees, so there's a couple things. The budget obviously we'll work on as a whole council, but the budget committee will start working on that right away. And then we have the police policy that we need to review right away to get that up and running. Do you have any questions? Let me know. If, if this new committee structure doesn't work, it seems like we're halfway through the year and it's not going to work, we'll back up and try, but it's a good way to try something different, prevent y'all from having to meet multiple times a month, and streamline things a little bit. But like I said, you're welcome to attend any committee meeting that you would like to attend.
So you're going to adopt the schedules for the committees?
For everything.
You will not be adopting the schedule for the planning commission and the EDA?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt the council and committee meeting schedule, which would include the two committees and the council meeting as stated in the agenda.
You make a motion that accepts the scheduling of the town council meeting and your two committee appointment meeting.
And just to clarify, the first Thursday for the council meeting, that's at 7:00 PM. What time do the other committees meet?
What works for you?
I'll do the six.
Can you tell by that one?
Six would be good.
Got you. So we'll do six on the budget. Is 6:00 PM okay with you, Otis, with your ability? Amy? So the motion will read town council first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. The budget, policy, personnel, and ordinance committee the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM. The utility, streets, sidewalks, buildings, and grounds will be the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM. I have that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, from this meeting. Is there any other discussion? All in favors, raise your right hand. All in blue, correct, motion passes. Moving along to tab number five, the budget schedule.
Mr. Mayor, we have to go back to the EDA schedule and the planning commission's schedule.
They set their own.
They have set their own schedule.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question while it was changed, because they have not set that with EDA. That's just a placeholder.
That was a placeholder.
Got you. Okay.
Or is this just being presented for a person? It would be better to have staff.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda, the budget schedule is for, for information only. We'll have staff work out to get the dates set for the, for the two, first two lines on there. Do you have the date?
Third Monday, the third Tuesday of February.
Let me get those dates.
Sixteenth?
Okay, so now that we've got these dates secured and we can say 7:00 PM will those also?
Six.
So 6:00 PM will those two dates. Is there a motion to approve the budget schedule as posted with January 15th at 6:00 PM and February 19th at 6:00 PM and then the following schedule for the discussion? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We're going to, we're going to move item number six down to-
Right before staff.
Yeah, we'll go right before staff reports for the, for the training session that we had. That way we can allow the public to, if they need to leave, they can share their comments. We have no public hearings, no delegations. I'd like to open up the public comment section. Just a friendly reminder that these will be limited to three minutes per person, but you're allowed, you're able to speak on any topic that you would like to and just come to the podium, speak, state your name and address and-
Hi, my name is Kathy South and I live over in Bowling Green Meadows. My concern is going in and out of the parking lot at the post office up here. You cannot see when people park right in front with the large trucks, with the box trucks, with the large SUVs. My husband and I have both stood our car on end several times to keep from running into somebody because you cannot see. You've restricted parking on the opposite side of the street in front of a residence there. You've got plenty of parking in the post office parking lot on either side of the building. I mean, we're an aging community and a lot of us are not quite as careful maybe as, but we should be. A lot of us are short like I am, so we can't see. We have to really get out into the street before we can see any traffic coming. I'm asking for your consideration before somebody gets hurt, seriously. She just restricted right there in that front, just like I said, there's plenty of parking in the lot and on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you. Davis, do you, do you mind taking a look at that during the week and just come back with the recommendation?
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on any matter?
Hi, I'm Barbara Allen and I live at 201 Travis Street. I have a question concerning an item that is on tonight's agenda. Should I address this item now or will I be allowed to speak when that item on the agenda comes up?
Now, sir.
Okay. I attended the December 6th council meeting and I asked two questions concerning the sewer construction project. One concerned a quality control inspector, which was answered, and the other concerned the water line break. I viewed the video of the meeting and my, excuse me, exact words were, and I quote, "I had been watching some of the sewer work down on Milford Street. I understand there was a water break down there this week and people were with a water. Was this an accident by the construction company or was it mismarked water lines that caused that?" End of quote. I received an answer from the director of public works stating that it was caused by the construction company packing dirt back in the hole when they finished the, the construction that day. Now, if you'll turn to page two of the minutes of this meeting, what the December 6th town council members say is, and I quote, Barbara Allen, 125 Travis Street. Ms. Allen questioned whether a water main break caused by sewer main repairs in the vicinity was intentionally caused by town staff. End quote. Do council members think I implied that the town staff intentionally caused the water line break? Town staff is not even putting in the new sewer lines and I never referred to town staff in my question. If you want specific reasons for the wording of my question, I'll be glad to explain, especially the reference to the, the mismarked lines.
No, I actually, I had a, no, I had a question on that minute, so when it comes up in the consent agenda, I was just going to give clarification on that also because I read that, I guess, Monday when I got back into town and I didn't understand your question to be that it was intentionally done by town staff. So we'll get that corrected in a minute.
Okay. Who's responsible for writing the minutes then?
I don't know.
Did I imply that to you? Maybe I asked?
You know, I don't, I don't know why I had assumed that. I didn't, I just went from my notes and not from the actual tape, from the actual-
Okay, just a bit, I wasn't happy when I saw it. I'll put that one-
I apologize. That was, that was, I'm the only one that's responsible for that. It hasn't been due in council.
Okay.
They are here to approve it and point out mistakes.
Well, I didn't want to come back to, to council with this, but I figured this was the only way to clear it.
No, that's, that's good because that's what we, when we get down to the consent agenda, we're signing off that the minutes are as we take them to be, so we need to get that fixed anyway. So it's-
I didn't know how many had read the complete minutes and would have even picked up on that, but I, there was never, never my intention to blame the town staff for any of it, so. Also, would you please correct my address?
Yeah.
I lived at 201 Travis Street since 1973, so I don't think I'm moving anytime soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on any matter? Then we'll move on to staff reports. We'll start with the Freedom of Information Act and Conflict of Interest Orientation. And you each receive a little pamphlet at your desk.
I think I can see the other room here. Is that all right if I just throw mine here? Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk a little bit about the Freedom of Information Act and the Conflict of Interest Act, as well as I want to talk about just sort of information about how it is that Virginia law requires localities to govern. And I would like to talk this evening maybe for 15 or 20 minutes and then perhaps if the agenda allows, set another session at the next meeting. What I tend to find is that everything sounds very reasonable and easy until you get to apply it. So, you know, once we have a couple of meetings under our belt, I find that people have questions and that it's helpful to kind of, you know, go through things slowly. So with that, this book guide is created by Roger Wiley and he does a great job with it. It is a wonderful reference. I encourage you to hold on to it, you know, stick it in your glove compartment or wherever you keep reference materials. So my role as the town attorney is to provide legal advice to the council and that is to you, the council, as a whole. I do not represent any of you individually. I try to share information equally. I'm not on, I don't take a side. My job is to answer your questions in terms of the application of Virginia law, maybe outline options that you have and if it's appropriate to provide a recommendation to you. And then the decision as far as how to proceed rests with council. So the only time that you have the ability to take any action is when you are sitting at a meeting that is properly noticed and where minutes are being taken. So for example, I'll pick on Ms. Davis. She does not have the ability to announce anything or proclaim anything or make any decisions about anything in particular. It requires an action of the council or council to, to do something. You can certainly still have your own opinion about things, but in terms of taking a formal action, it must be from a majority of the council. Sometimes there are actions where a supermajority is required, but we'll talk about those when those arise. The, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requires that for the council to meet, that there must be notice posted at least three business days prior to the meeting here at town hall. The law does allow for special or emergency meetings, but I tend to recommend that you limit the occasions where you have special or emergency meetings because the purpose of the Freedom of Information Act is to give everybody enough notice so that the public can come to the meeting and can view what's going on and participate as council may deem appropriate. And so if you're constantly having last-minute meetings, then that hampers the ability of the public to meaningfully observe the actions of the government. So there must be three business days notice and there's a requirement that if more than, if three or more council members are together, that constitutes a meeting. So for example, if the three of you run into each other at the grocery store and you want to start talking about the budget, that would be an illegal meeting. So you don't want to do that. You can talk about grandchildren, you can talk about gardening, anything other than related to town business. And, you know, I have been known to count to three when I see three of you assembled. I know sometimes it's hard to do, but it is really important. And so before meetings, after meetings, at the post office, wherever you might run into each other, just resist the urge. The, the Freedom of Information Act absolutely allows for you to have social engagements. So if you want to have a party and invite all of council, that is completely fine to have a, a social event. It just can't be for the conducting of any public business. Committee meetings are also public and the public is able to attend and to view those meetings. Now, in terms of just your average, regular meeting like tonight, we always have public comment on our agenda. That is not legally required. And there are some localities that have done away with public comment. I don't think it's been very popular, but it is not an element that is required of a meeting. Only if you've advertised a public hearing for something like an ordinance or a zoning amendment, then you have to allow public input on that topic. But generally speaking, public comment is not required. Same thing goes for committee meetings. There is no required public comment for committee meetings. So that would be up to the committee whether public participation was going to be permitted or not. The mayor mentioned that everyone is of course welcome to attend every committee meeting and that is the case. However, if you intend to do that either for one particular topic or on a regular basis, it would be helpful to let the clerk know because we should really post it as a meeting of council. We can say it's a committee meeting, however, we anticipate that a majority of council will be there, therefore this meeting is being noticed for that purpose because the law requires that. Sometimes people, there have been localities that have had committee meetings and all of council just kind of shows up and they have an impromptu council meeting. That's again, what is, what the Freedom of Information Act is trying to discourage. Any questions about anything so far? No?
I do have a question. So Tammy, myself, and Deborah are going to this event on Tuesday. So I asked them if they all wanted to drive together. So the three of us drive together, is that a challenge or is that what you're thinking?
It's completely fine as long as you don't discuss the transaction of public business. You know, I think you can talk about things generally like, wow, who knew the Freedom of Information Act was so hard? You know, something like that or, you know, concerns that you might have, but you don't want to talk about the budget or talk about issues related to water or, you know, anything that we really have going on in the town. Yeah. Yeah, I shared that at a training that I did for VML about six months ago and there were a bunch of people who were like, oh, we should have told us that at the beginning. were a bunch of people who were like, oh, we should have told us that at the beginning of the conference. So, the, when you have a special or emergency meeting, there are specific procedures that we're required to follow under the state law, as well as the town code. One of them is that you have to specifically identify the matters that are going to be discussed or considered by the council. And you have to detail them specifically, because then at that special meeting, if you want to have another topic added, you must have all members of council there and must have unanimous consent to amend the agenda. So, that's just kind of a tricky little thing about special meetings. Another reason why, you know, it's, it's better to have meetings that are voted on by the council as a whole at a meeting. For example, if you all wanted to vote to have a meeting next Thursday at 5:00 for the purpose of transacting, you know, additional town business, then you would not be limited in the items that can be placed on the agenda. But when a special meeting is called, you have to be very specific about what's going to be discussed. A special meeting can be called by the mayor, or it can be called by two or more members of the council. So, if you find that there are two or more of you that want to call a special meeting, please contact Melissa, or Reese, or myself, and it will help you get the appropriate notices done.
All right. Question B, does a special meeting obviously require a quorum to do any action?
It does. A special meeting does require a quorum to take action. And another kind of funny little quirk is that, let's say we have a meeting and a quorum doesn't show up. If you have three or more, you've still got to take minutes. You can talk about public business, you just can't vote on anything. All these nooks and crannies.
I also have a question. Back to the three or more members together, if they're discussing county business or so forth?
Town business.
Town business.
Yes. You can talk about county business.
Okay. You're privy to that. How do you go to report that? How does that all work?
The, a violation of the Freedom of Information Act is handled through the local commonwealth attorney and would be addressed that way. So, the person who observed it would go to the commonwealth attorney. Or you can also file an action yourself, which the forms are online.
And also, do emails follow it out when the car be covered, say several members?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, she's asking if the mayor sends out an email to all members of council, whether that constitutes a meeting. And there's been a lot of discussion about that in the past 10 to 15 years, particularly as our electronic devices have gotten faster and faster and faster, and you can, you know, respond wittily split. So far, they are not considered a public meeting by the courts. However, the Freedom of Information Act Advisory Council will tell you not to do it. And they're saying that because that's kind of their policy decision statewide, and I understand that, that makes sense. Their workaround is, if the mayor wants to send something and share the information with council, is for him to send it to the town manager and then copy all of the members of council, and that that way the information can be shared with everyone. I, I don't think that emails even yet can fly back and forth that fast. I would discourage you from going into a chat room or some other kind of thing like that, where, like Facebook Messenger, where it really does go fast, back and forth. I would avoid that. But, you know, if there's a need, sometimes it's hard to get the same information to everyone, and I think it is important for everyone to have the same information. So, I'm not totally averse to emails that get sent to everyone. That being said, I urge you a lot of caution about having in-depth discussions over email. The main reason is they lead to a lot of misunderstandings. It's not a great way to have a discussion. That's the first thing. Obviously, someone could accuse you of having an illegal meeting and making up your minds before you come here, which is also a disadvantage and not a good thing. And, you know, they are all subject to FOIA. So, you could all be reading all of your emails in the newspaper, and sometimes what sounds okay in the heat of the moment doesn't really sound so good the next morning when you're reading it online or in the newspaper. So, I just would urge caution about that. It's important to develop relationships with each other, to be able to disagree without being disagreeable, to establish mutual respect, ground rules, courtesy, all of those things are really important. And what I see sometimes is that people use email as a way to avoid having to talk to each other. And I, I think that that's unfortunate. I think that's a loss for you as a governing body, because whether you like it or not, you're all in it together. And I kind of liken being an elected official to being, you know, like the people who have to put one leg in the potato sack race and run down the field. Well, you know, all of you have one leg in that potato sack. And so you got to decide what direction you're going to go in and how you're going to get there. So, speaking of emails, since we're on that, how are we doing on time?
Go for it.
Have the rest of the night?
Sure.
Okay.
If it keeps us out of trouble, then...
So, speaking of emails, any type of communication that is related to the transaction of public business related to the town, text, Facebook, what's it called, Snapchat, Twitter, Instagram, all of those, if you are engaging in the transaction of public business, it is subject to FOIA and it is a public document. So, for example, if you send an email to the mayor, and you start out by sharing, I don't know, embarrassing personal information in the first paragraph, you know, like, because we're all from the South, and we can't ever get right to the point, we have to say something like, oh, I hope you had a good holiday, or whatever. But, you know, let's just say, for whatever reason, you want to share something embarrassing, and then you move on to talk about the real purpose of the email. If somebody makes a request for that, the embarrassing personal information cannot be redacted, it can't be taken out. So, you have to give them the whole document. And there have been situations where people talked about getting drunk and other unfortunate things that they really never intended to be included in a, in a public email, but it's the content of the email that dictates whether or not it's public. So, it doesn't matter what email account it comes out of, it doesn't matter what social media account it comes out of. What matters is the content of the email. And any tinge of the transaction of public business is going to pull it into that public forum, or, you know, make it a public document. And I'll give you an example. I had a friend who is an attorney, not in this area, who had gotten a request from the newspaper for any mail emails between, I think it was the clerk of the council and one of the council members. And the clerk of the council was young and attractive, and the council member was older and married. And somehow, the reporter seemed to think that perhaps there was some sort of romantic involvement between these two. And so the attorney was concerned about how to handle this request, and I said, well, okay, so we've got to look at every single email. And we did. And what the emails demonstrated was that the council member really did have a penchant for the clerk, the clerk not so much, but the council member was so taken with the clerk that he never talked about anything other than his adoration and desire for the clerk. There was never any transaction of any public business. And so they are outside the scope of FOIA, because they were only about, ooh, baby, baby, you've got beautiful blue eyes. To keep your personal life personal and your public life public. And, you know, and don't flirt with the clerk. So, it is the content that governs whether or not it's a public document. It's not whether it comes from your Yahoo account or an official email account that the town might set up for you. Now, you have emails...
I had that request recently for any, any documentation that I spoke of, a local newspaper regarding anything, they wanted it for my town email and my personal email. So, you have to go back and search and prove that there was nothing there, and so...
Right.
I just had that recent request.
Well, which brings me to my next point, is that if you're going to be transacting public business, please use your Bowling Green email, because that way, if you get a Freedom of Information Act request, Reese can be responsible for pulling it off of the server, or getting IT to pull it off the server, and you don't have to go through your AOL account and go, oh, what was that email about? Oh, no, that's not it. And that way also, you won't be accused of hiding information. It's not uncommon that someone will ask for a very large document request, and they'll ask for every email for the last two months from every council member. And when people have to pull it from their own personal computers and personal emails, they, nobody had, no two people have the same thing. So, it just, it's a lot easier for you if you can just use it through the town email. Any questions so far? So, I want to say one other thing about meetings, and then I'm going to stop. Everything that you do, sitting as a council, is considered to be open and public. And there are certain circumstances where you're allowed to go into closed meeting. And that means you can exclude the public, and the only people who are entitled to be there are the members of council. So, if you go into a closed meeting, you decide whether I'm in there, or Reese is in there. If you want us to leave, you can, you know, you can tell us to leave. The only people are the council members themselves. The, the motion to go into the closed meeting needs to have three parts. It has to have the code section, it has to have the general topic, and then a more specific delineation of the topic. So, for example, going into closed meeting pursuant to Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion of the annual performance evaluation of the town manager. And so it kind of funnels down to become more specific. So, there should always be three parts. If you would like to have a closed meeting, it would be helpful if maybe you could talk with Melissa, or Reese, or me, so that we can craft the motion and have it ready ahead of time. You're only allowed to talk about what is specifically identified in the motion in a closed meeting. And when you come out of the closed meeting, you have to certify that you only talked about what you said you were going to talk about. If you go into a closed meeting and people go wildly outside the bounds, you should not come out and lie. You sort of then have to say, I cannot certify, because that isn't what happened. So, it's important to kind of help keep everybody on track, and usually I, I try to assist with that as well. Matters that are discussed in closed meeting are intended to be held confidential, because otherwise, why would you be doing it outside of the public eye? Sometimes it's economic development, or, you know, something that, that the council's not ready to share with, with the citizens in the community yet. That being said, there is no penalty for sharing information in a closed meeting. There's no legal penalty. There are frequently penalties in terms of the anger and frustration from fellow council members, but it's not against the law to do that. You are not required to take minutes during a closed meeting. You certainly can take notes. If you want to take notes, they would be exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. There is no requirement that there be tape recording during a closed meeting. I did have a council member once who suspected that other council members were talking about her, and so she brought a recorder into the closed meeting, and it was in her purse. Nobody knew about it until later. And she got up and went to the restroom, and then came back and told people later what she had done. Well, that's a significant breach of trust in terms of your fellow council members, number one. And that's why I say, you know, there's like the law, and then there's treating each other fairly, even when you don't agree or get along. So, that was a huge breach of trust, even though it was legal. But when she got up and went to the restroom, it became illegal, because in Virginia, if you're going to record something, you can record it as long as one person to the conversation knows that it's being recorded. Well, the point at which she got up and left, there was nobody who knew anything was being recorded. So, I, you know, I share these stories just to really urge you to, to work together and to be fair, and to kind of decide what your ground rules are going to be. Thank you.
So, with that stated, I'll just, I mean, just my past experience on council is, I mean, there are times in closed session where we may start to divert down the path, but we come right back on the topic with the encouragement of either myself or the nudging of the town attorney. So, I mean, that doesn't necessarily mean that we won't certify when we come out, but we try to stay on that topic as best we can, because it's human nature to kind of divert. Another thing I'd like to say is, like, the town attorney said, the, the trust amount council members needs to be there. We're here to serve the public as a whole body and work together. So, that, that being said, that every time that three people are standing in the corner, we don't need to be note-taking and pointing out unless, unless you know...
Oh, I know, point it out.
Unless, no, I'm saying, unless there's public business going on, or just a friendly reminder, hey, hey, guys, you shouldn't be together right now. I mean, we're not here as children to play cattle tale, but we want to keep everybody in check. So, just have that mutual respect is what I'm trying to say, that we're not out here to try to catch people unless they're doing something wrong intentionally. So, just, just keep that in mind, especially with new members, it slips your mind quickly that three of y'all just happen to stand there, or two of y'all are talking, and one other person just happens to walk up and you not even realize it. So, just, just be cordial and let's... So, just be cordial and let's make this a good next two years for everybody and work together for the best interests of the community. So. All right. Well, thank you, Andrea. And we've talked about this as the year goes on. We may plug in a couple more FOIA trainings or information training-
I'm not done with FOIA yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, next month.
Oh, next month. Next month we'll talk about conflict.
Andrea was talking about the emails. Are we doing anything to get our email system working better? Or we're looking into a new server connection? I mean, what? Because they are just terrible with iPhones.
I haven't yet initiated discussions, but I did mention to the mayor that I'm going to be looking at switching over to Google as the provider. And I'll follow up before the next meeting to see what we need to do to do that. Because I used, we used that system the last place I was at. It's much better than this.
Okay, so we will continue having training on the conflict of interest at the next meeting. And then, we will, as examples come up through the years, we may have other topics where the town attorney has good examples for us on how we need to handle that. But be careful with your emails because your personal email is open to this also. Next on the agenda is staff reports. Police chief, any questions on the police departments?
And before he says anything on the heads-up items, one of the first items-
First item on the policy committee is looking at the police department policy. So, I'll beat you to that, chief.
Okay. Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, happy new year to you. Congratulations to all the new faces here on council. As it pertains to the police department policy, I furnished council with a copy of that policy. I believe it was February 2018, council meeting. My question to you tonight before we get started, do you still have your copy or do you need to be provided another copy?
There's, you can do that.
We'll get them.
Get copies.
Okay. Are there any questions to me tonight?
I've only heard great things about your auxiliary officers. Any opinions?
It's good to see the DUIs getting off the street and the marijuana arrests. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next item is the public works report. Are there any questions for Billy?
Seems like, seems like everything's going good. The parade went well, the leaf collection, everything. I haven't heard any complaints in town on anything. Seems like the construction project's going-
Yeah.
Kind of on schedule with the rain as much as it can. We do have that public meeting tomorrow night, an information meeting.
That's right.
So, anybody that wants to attend, that's welcome to attend the public meeting tomorrow night to just discuss progress.
Mr. Mayor, how is that publicized?
There was, I had a letter.
A flyer.
A flyer. Yes, and it was on, I think we shared it on the social media, but if not, we'll definitely get that on the social media. But I saw a flyer of residence or property on this house, so.
We're trying to get a little bit more heads-up notice maybe a couple of weeks to get it out. Just to make sure it's a little shorter.
Sounds good. Okay, and we use the new website. Okay, next is the events coordinator. Too awesome.
Mr. Mayor, town council, members of council, thank you so much for having me tonight. Most of my report goes over the ins and outs of the Bowling Green Christmas parade that was held last month. It was a great success, probably the best Christmas parade I've ever done. And maybe that's because of, done a few. But it was really a great event and I just really enjoy seeing the idea of the lights building every single year. It was a lot of fun and it was a pleasure to coordinate the event. I do want to thank the few folks. I want to thank our public works department for getting things ready and for breaking things down. I also want to thank the Bowling Green Police Department for making this event fun and safe and secure for everyone. I want to offer thanks to Kelvick Construction for working with us to ensure that there were no conflicts with the sewer line replacement in town. I want to thank town staff for offering the clerical support that we needed, answering phone calls, accepting registration forms. I want to thank our distinguished judges from Fort Epi, Lieutenant Colonel Gaines, Sergeant Major Riley, and our new council member Valerie Foyle for offering your time. Thank you, Councilman Mark Gaines, for lending your space on Main Street for photos of Santa. Carrie Bischoff provided the staging for the judges. Bill Webb provided his property to allow for the staging to be placed. I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. David Stork for offering their personal golf cart, use of their personal golf cart that they do for just about every event. I don't know what I'd do without that, so I'm very grateful. They also allow the Stork Funeral Home property for staging of Santa's horse-tron carriage. Thanks to Joseph Amato and Katie Amato and the staff at Roma's for allowing us to host the award ceremony after the parade. And finally, I truly have the best volunteer staff that anyone could ever ask for. Melissa Lewis, thank you for your time. Whitney Watts, Jennifer Blanchard, Erin Brooks, Kim Bright, Jimmy Farmer, Spencer Allen, and Rachel Farmer. I just couldn't have done it without you guys. So, if anyone has any questions about the parade, I'm happy to answer those. It was a great event. Most of my work outside of the Christmas parade has been, you know, with the Economic Development Authority. I've also secured, you'll notice under miscellaneous items, secured photographer to do some, three installments of marketing photos for the town of Bowling Green to use for social media, marketing, website development, that sort of thing. That's something we've never had. And when I was first hired, I was given a shoebox of photos and that's what we had. So, this is a really big deal. We're getting a good rate from Mandy Lawrence Photography. She's very talented. And we've already collected images of fall and winter, so we'll have spring photos to look forward to. And that'll be just great from a stock photo standpoint. I'm looking forward to events in 2019 and I should be having an event calendar to share with you all next month for approval. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Just an oddity. Santa's like a carriage. Is that a town resident who raised that out?
No, ma'am. That is a person in Pennsylvania who we've used loyally every year. He's really great. His name is Ricky McGlue.
Has he always talked about a map? I mean, to me, I know I'm old, but $600, Joel, I mean, I think that's exorbitant.
Well, he is two stallion horses, yes. That's, he's never raised his rates. That's what we've made every year. And he's also brings this carriage that he paints every single year and puts new lights on every year too. So, considering the transporting of the horses and the carriage and that sort of thing, it's a, it's a pretty reasonable price. I have shopped around. Horse-tron carriages can go anywhere from $1,800 to 600, which is what we're paying.
Oh, we used to bring it in on a fire truck. Cost us nothing.
There's a huge liability at this point of doing this on a public, on a fire truck. Like, nobody can ride on the back of-
How about if somebody had a convertible? Is that a liability? If you could ride on a convertible? To me, I'm sorry, but I just think that's a lot of money.
I am only here to make sure that your vision is executed. And I am completely ambivalent one way or the other about the money spent on Santa and the horse-tron carriage.
I was there and I did take particular notice. In fact, I was right in front of the judge's stand. And a lot of people left even before Santa Claus came through around me. It was like, there was nobody around me. So, I'm like, do people really appreciate that? I don't know.
It's definitely something that we'll take a look at and something that we'll certainly consider in 2019. Thank you for offering that feedback. I'm usually not down there at the judge's stand toward the end of the parade. I'm at the end, making sure everything is, you know, following through. But I do appreciate that feedback and it's important that I hear from you all who are the spectators and who are watching and seeing what's going on from a spectator's standpoint.
It was cold that night, so people were leaving because the kids were cold and everything. But I think it was warmer, they all were stable. But we had, we sent them down where we were too. And it was by time Santa came through, I believe. It was cold.
I'm sorry.
At all.
I'm sorry. I said that it was quite cold that night. So, the kids were leaving, you know, the parents were getting fed up with the kids. They're all, you know, really cold and they hadn't been out there for a while. So, I think the parade was great. It's just the temperature had a lot to do with it, I feel, is why they had left.
Does anyone have any other questions for me at this time?
No, I think, I think the coldness is, the people getting cold and leaving early is the product of a good parade. I mean, it's a lot of entries and that's what we want in the parade, is a lot of entries. So, I'm at-
We had a great lineup this year. I mean, it was, it couldn't have been any better. And it was cold and I can speak from riding in David Stork's golf cart. I kept wanting to reach down for the heat. There is no heat. But, but thank you for your feedback and it was always a pleasure working for you. 2018 was a phenomenal year for events in Bowling Green. It's been a true pleasure and honor to work for the town of Bowling Green and for the people of the town of Bowling Green.
I'd just like to commend Joel Son and job well done. It was fabulous. My family always enjoys it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work and we'll get together here soon and plan out 2019.
Thank you so much. And I'd also just like to offer my thank yous to members of council, leadership, and members in the audience who have offered their condolences on my grandfather who passed away recently. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, are there any questions on the town clerk or treasurer's monthly report? Or do you have any comments you'd like to share?
I have just one comment on the heads-up item. I had listed that an expense summary report would be placed on the table tonight. However, I didn't get to make all the adjustments I was hoping, so I did not put the expense summary report on the table because it would have reflected incorrect numbers. So, I am meeting with the CPA later this week and we should have all the corrections done and we'll have it for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. The town managers' report, are there any comments or questions? We'll move on to the consent agenda. With that being said, we want to note that the minutes from the December 6, 2018 meeting needs to be corrected.
And while he's looking for that, if I could just explain, so consent agenda is intended to be kind of generally routine things that it just makes the meeting more efficient. You can pile them all together and then approve it all at one time. However, if there's ever something you want to talk about on the consent agenda, when we get to the consent agenda, you know, you can say, "Mr. Mayor, I would like for item number, you know, 14, the minutes to be removed from the agenda as I would like to discuss and vote on them separately." And then, what happens is you vote on the rest of the consent agenda and then the next thing that comes up is whatever it was that was pulled off and then you vote on that separately.
And we should do that for item 13? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think you have to do that in this case. I'm just letting people know how it works.
I think we have similar as to item 14, that there was information left off. We did have public comment in the special meeting. Mr. Stork came and gave an EDA for the award. Should not have noted in the meeting.
Okay, do you want to pull both sets of minutes off the consent agenda?
Can you also do that officially?
Okay, okay.
We have the two options. We can do it with the corrections or we can just pull them and roll out and go to the next month's consent. So, if that's council's pleasure.
We can just go around with the corrections if you want to do that. In fact, it's not a problem. But just make sure that item 14 reflects that there was public comment in the meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the two items added?
May I, I already read that sentence coming out.
Yeah.
I'd like to correct under public comments on the December 6 to read Barbara Allen, 201 Travis Street. Ms. Allen questioned whether a water main break that occurred during sewer main repairs in the vicinity was accidentally caused by mis-marking of water lines. Is that an appropriate representation?
Or by the construction group?
The next sentence states, "The town's director of public work explained it was an accident that occurred when the contractor was replacing dirt."
And so, then the minutes on December 17 are also amended to reflect that there was public comment.
By Mr. Stork.
By Mr. Stork.
We have a motion with the consent agenda as amended in both meetings' minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
I thought you made the motion.
No official motion was made, I don't think, so it's a fair debate.
Okay, I'll make the official motion. You make the motion. Is there a second? Second by Otis. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We'll get through this meeting. Thank you. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the Caroline County Health Insurance memorandum of understanding. The background on this, the county board of supervisors has approved the town's participation in its self-insurance health plan administered by Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. The town's current plan terminates at the end of January and the MOU allows the town's employees to enroll for coverage effective February 1, 2019. Which is me to motion to approve the MOU. We appreciate the county's efforts in including us in this, this plan.
We have a question if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, is this for a specific period of time? Is it an annual renewal or is this for a three-to-a-year period? I'm sorry.
It's an annual renewal.
It's an annual renewal.
The question was, is this for more than one year? It's a yearly renewal.
I make a motion and I accept the MOU as it is.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Otis. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you.
Any opposed?
All right, next one here, we just have no new business and we have a few informational items, which are the reminder of the second bi-monthly public meeting for the sewer line replacement project, which will be held tomorrow night, 6:00 PM here in Town Hall. This public information meeting serves to educate and update residents, businesses, and the general public about the construction activities on South Main Street, Maury Avenue, Dorsey Lane, and Wilford Street related to a sewer line replacement project. And a presentation will be followed by- presentation will be followed by a question and answer session. And the next informational item is the calendar year 2019 holiday schedule. Um, just informational purposes, um, for what we, what our town office will be closed Next, we have report of council committees or just council member comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Jean.
Uh, reminder, the community leadership reception, APEL, um, put that. I guess everybody needs to reply.
Did everybody receive that email invitation?
No.
Okay, we'll get staff to make sure you get that information. I received the email, I just, I haven't responded to it. Okay, anything? That's it? Okay. Any comments or?
Is it January 25?
Yes, January 25.
Uh, yeah, 25th, then 6 to 8.
That was one email I actually got, but it was really my spam, but it is, I'm very interested. But anyway, um, yeah, I, I need some help with my emails, or it's not, I'm getting some of the stuff through the council email, but I can't send out, I can't get a comment about that from phones. It can all be, it's all, I think I should-
I can't send you.
Yeah, so.
It, it takes a little bit of get, uh, setup is troublesome on sending emails, and we'll get with Frank on getting it set up in the meantime. We're going to really explore switching over to the Gmail for the town, town email. I think that'll clear up a lot of issues.
Still keep your old address.
Yeah, your, your old address will still be the same, but we'll be using Gmail on the backside, hopefully.
Something to say about online, because I, really, if there's anything I won't know, I mean, it's kind of selective, so I'll, I'm gonna-
Okay, we'll make sure we've, anything we send with emails, we'll, for the meantime, we'll follow up with phone calls. Thank you. Okay, any, any comments?
Nothing.
Okay.
No.
All right.
All right, most of them.
Of course, EDA did need to discuss the, uh, the couple of things that we discussed in the December 6 special committee meeting. Uh, there'll be some opportunities to move forward. Uh, we're still looking forward with the, uh, the development and, uh, north of the property, some, some issues that are coming to progression, some information coming forward, so we'll be reporting on that probably in the next month.
Okay. Um, my only comments, um, unfortunately, on the 25th, I will be representing the town at another function in Fredericksburg for the Regional Chamber of Commerce. So I will speak with the manager's office and, and share my regrets, but that will be represented by several council members, and I'll give it to you, going to see if you're able to attend in my hours. Okay, thank you. Um, and I also want to make it known that the February meeting, I will be out of town, um, so you'll be sitting in the hot seat for that meeting. No problem. And that's all I have. I look forward to a, um, good and successful 2019 and working with each one of y'all in, in the many ways that we need to work together. One says, quick second, we're going to have to go into closed session.
Um, the, the town manager has requested a closed session, and so is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for, um, the discussion of the performance duties and contract of the town manager?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, we will adjourn for a quick five minutes.
You're not going to adjourn.
I'm sorry, we're going to recess for a quick five minutes.
Sorry.
Do you certify?
Wait, you've got to have a motion.
Come out of closed session.
And to certify.
And to certify.
I do, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second, what is, any discussion? You certify?
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
Good. All in, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?